Thank you, thank you. We have Commissioner Delo's on the phone. We have a quorum in the building. Commissioner Dozier, I believe you have the invocation and the pledge today. The floor is yours.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I have the pleasure of inviting up our very own Pastor James Shaw, New Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church and Leon County's wonderful Management Information Services. So if you'll join me for the invitation, thank you, James. I should say Pastor Shaw.
May we pray, please. Eternal God and Father, Lord, we thank you today for your love and mercy, for your grace and power, for the victory we have through our Lord Jesus Christ. We thank you for this opportunity to serve. We actually give us wisdom today to make decisions that will benefit not only Leon County, but the surrounding counties and every person that will benefit. Thank you for each of them as they serve. Keep them healthy and whole. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank everybody for coming out this afternoon. We'll start with awards and proclamations and presentations. The first proclamation will be presented by Commissioner Dozier as recognition of March 4th through 10th, 2018, as Women in Construction Week. Commissioner Dozier, have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite up Jackie Wilson and others from National, from NAWIC, National Association of Women in Construction. Welcome. And Commissioners and for everyone, this is an annual proclamation that we do celebrating women in construction. And I think I probably say this every year, but I have to do it one more time, that having worked in construction, having been a member of NAWIC long ago, I really celebrate what the organization continues to do. But I think it's also even more poignant right now because of everything we're doing to get more women, minorities, anyone to come into the trades. There's a lot of good jobs, and I know you all are really focused on that. So we all hope that more women and others look to construction as a great career choice. So with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Tallahassee Chapter Number 72 of the National Association of Women in Construction has distinguished itself for 54 years as the voice of women in construction in Leon County, Florida. And whereas the work done by Tallahassee Chapter 72 has benefited Leon County through community development and education programs. And whereas the Tallahassee Chapter Number 72 has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry. And whereas the construction community represented by Tallahassee Chapter 72 has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trade careers, and positive vision of the future. And whereas the Tallahassee Chapter 72 has sought to achieve successful results for Leon County and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. And whereas we applaud Tallahassee Chapter 72 of the National Association of Women in Construction and maybe, and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and in support of women in construction. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize the week of March 4th through 10th, 2018, as Women in Construction Week, and encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments. It's dated today, the 23rd of February, and signed by all the Commissioners and the county administrator. Jackie, would you like to introduce your others? And thank you for being here.
Thank you. I think I know all of you, and we've been up here several years, and I continue to thank you for your support, especially on our WIC Week, we call it, Women in Construction Week. I do have with me today Kerwin Jones Wilson. And Kerwin owns, she's a general contractor in Leon and in Gaston County, very active in this area and a fairly new member to our association. She's been with us a couple of years, and we're just thrilled to have her as a general contractor. She's kind of been our chairman for this event this year, so we wanted to accept this. Thank you again. We do appreciate your support.
Do you want to say anything? Okay. We're going to get a picture, but I do want to say, Cohen, general contractor exam is not easy. So, well done, and not a lot of women go through it. So, thank you for representing throughout our area.
And she said she was in a room with all men except for her when she did that.
That's not surprising. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Yes, sir. I was wondering if, saw Mr. Jones over there, and I was wondering if Mr. Jones had made contact, if he would make contact with Ms. Wilson. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
He's on it.
Thank you. Beautiful picture. Next, we have a presentation by Honor Flight. My friend, my good friend, Mr. Tom Napier, come on up and give us a presentation, sir.
Mayor of Woodgate.
Mayor of Woodgate.
Mayor of Woodgate.
Yes, sir.
Welcome to Woodgate. Come on up, Matt. Oh, my. This goes to the Chairman, Chairman Matt Kemp. He likes to present the county commission, something that we really appreciate, we all appreciate, what you've done for us all these years. You've been there in the early mornings, you've been there at night when you arrive back. You always help us anytime we ask for help. And God bless you all. You come here to each one of us, and I'd like to present through Matt and Chuck, and also to Chuck Moore and Tom Quillen, the presentation of Leon County.
Thank you. You know Chief Tom Quillen, who's on our board, he's our secretary. This is Colonel Chuck Moore, he's on our board. And of course, you know Mr. Napier, we call him the Admiral. He is our Vice Chair. There are 13 board members that are fully involved with Honor Flight, and we all, for the Board of Trustees, want to thank you for your support over the years. Leon County was the first organization to support Honor Flight, and we so appreciate that. And we have a presentation here with a picture of the plane coming in to Tallahassee with the fire department shooting, the water over the top, it's called a Water Arch Salute. And what this, just to let you know, this picture has been presented and accepted by the State of Florida History Museum, and it's been presented and accepted to the United States Library of Congress, and it's been accepted there also. So it's on file at both locations. So we have this, and this picture is representative of veterans coming home after a day of trip. But this is more than that. This is veterans coming home from their very long journey in the military. And after this flight, we will have flown 480 veterans. This is our sixth flight. We will have flown a total of 1,008 people on our flight, which includes the guardians, the medics, the doctors, all the people that it takes to make this flight happen. And it couldn't have been done if it hadn't have been for Leon County and the support that you've provided to us. And we appreciate you so much. And this says, "With appreciation for your ongoing support to the Honor Flight mission presented to the Leon County Board of County Commissioners from Honor Flight Tallahassee." So thank you very much, and we just appreciate your support so much.
I just want to, while we're taking the pictures, provide some comments. First of all, Tom Mack from EMS, Tom, it's great to see you, by the way. But I'm so proud of our EMS for spearheading this and getting it off the ground and then building the Community Coalition. Colonel, the Admiral, thank you all so much for the time and energy that you put in. Colleagues, I had the opportunity, I believe it was the first Honor Flight, to participate on, and it was so impactful and so meaningful. I would highly encourage you to look at your calendars now, and if you are available May 15th for the Honor Flight, sign up to volunteer. It is a wonderful experience to be a part of this community and to go up and to participate. And my commitment, hopefully I'm going to be able to make it, I'm going to do everything I possibly can, because I would love to participate again. But my hat's off to you. Wonderful job. Thank you so much for what you do for this community.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to consent. Mr. Administrator, any items proof of consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have one item pulled from consent, Item 8, pulled by Commissioner Proctor.
Remain, remaining consent's been moved by Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Jackson. All those in favor of motion on the floor, you can by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on now to items pulled for consent. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a status report on the United Way Alice Report, pulled by Commissioner Proctor. I would note that this comes to you, I believe, at your request from the last meeting. Again, we thought we had the direction right to bring it back as a status report, but had a quick conversation with Commissioner Proctor, and obviously your staff is ready, willing, and able to bring this back in any more detail that the board would like. And before I hand it off to Commissioner Proctor, just one note that we have one speaker card on the side. Commissioner Proctor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, I know you all have all seen Item 8, the Alice Report, which was authorized, sanctioned by our United Way. This report was a study from Rutgers University, their School of Public Affairs Administration. They looked at 15 states, they looked at our county, and it's a focal point upon local government in the conditions of poverty. The word "AL" is standing for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. Reverend Jesse Jackson used to call that the working poor. And here in our area, this information is far more detailed, extensive than when speaking with the United Way in previous weeks, and they made reference to the report, and I had not seen its pages. And now that staff has secured that report, placed it here on consent, it certainly does not belong on consent. I was willing and had not thought it was this detailed, but it really speaks to the essence of why I think each of us have run for public office. And whereas our previous presentation coming from the Office of OEV, it was an extended view of, on our screen, we heard from them in a formal presentation. I believe that while they talked about the economic success of our community, the Alice Report and what the United Way has comprehensively looked at is a report of those who are not faring to the standards of what we receive from OEV. As policymakers, I think that we deserve to have a balance and a fair view of all citizenry. And that's why, Commissioners, I'm asking if we could not adopt this report tonight, but move it further for either in our staff and when members of the United Way can be here to present, counter-present, argue, fuss, discuss, cuss, whatever's needed. This is some wonderful data, and I would just like to think that as you look at the pages of it right here, it's extensive. And so I like, you know, the favor of the body in making the motion that we would either, if it's the will of the Board, Chairman, to workshop this, this information, or either to receive and to allow for United Way officials to come in and point to and explicate the details and meanings of these various numbers for the area of Leon County. So I would make that motion that we would do those things.
Let's do a workshop.
Okay. Workshop.
Motion's been made to workshop this Item Number 8 at an upcoming board meeting. I have Commissioner Dozier in queue to speak. Motion made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier.
Do you have a public speaker?
I do have a public speaker. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one speaker, Dr. Ed Holyfield.
Dr. Holyfield, name and address for the record, please, sir. Thank you.
Ed Holyfield, Longleaf Court. I really decided to come here when I looked at the agenda and saw the Alice Report on the agenda as a consent item. And I have often told a number of the people in the community, including the Tallahassee Democrat, that I didn't think the Alice Report had ever received the attention that it deserves. And I still don't think that it's received the attention that it's deserved. I'm pleased to learn now, at this setting, that more attention will be given to it and that there will be a workshop, because, you know, this is not the first year of the Alice Report. You know, it's come out before, but it has received scant attention, and that was something I could never understand. Because one of the things that the Alice Report pointed out when it first, indicated when it first came out, was that the city of Tallahassee had one of the highest Gini coefficients in the entire country. And I won't go into the details, but the Gini coefficient is a measure of income inequality. And the fact that Tallahassee has the dubious distinction in the setting of being an all-America city, of having an objective study, this is just not Holyfield speaking, an objective study done that indicates that we have one of the highest levels of income inequality, not in the state of Florida, but in the entire country. Should be a concern for all of us.
Go ahead, Dr. [inaudible].
Especially, especially in regard to the plight of the working poor. And I'll just give you one example. The cafeteria workers at Tallahassee Memorial Hospital. Now, their wages are so low that people at Tallahassee Memorial won't even tell you what the salaries are. I've had to just do my own inquiry. I think that should be public information, the salaries that they pay the people. Fortunately, you can get the salaries of the people at the top because they have to form a, file a Form 990. And I reminded, you know, the people at the city, some of the people at the city, they asked me where the Form 990 was, at least one of them. And I knew I was in trouble then. But at least when they make the filing to the Internal Revenue Service, they have to indicate the salary of the highest employers. And what I found, I've checked on a number of years, the highest paid employee at Tallahassee Memorial is Malcolm Bryant. He makes more than, he makes more than 1.2 million a year, plus a bonus, at a so-called not-for-profit hospital. It's our hospital, it's a city-owned hospital, but if you look at the workers at the bottom at that hospital, they make wages so low that they reportedly are eligible for food stamps. And according to oral history, I've talked to some of the people in our cafeteria, and one woman told me, she said, "Yeah, I've worked in the cafeteria in the past at Tallahassee Memorial, and I got food stamps at the same time." Even when I was working full-time, I was eligible for food stamps. Now, there's something wrong with that. Number one, it's a city-owned hospital. You own that hospital, I own that hospital. We all own it. We own the land, we own the equipment, we own the buildings, we own everything inside the buildings. And at least to the people who run it at an obscene rate of a dollar a year. So this is some of the, you know, the kind of thing that's happening under our own noses when we run a city-owned hospital, lease it at an obscene rate of a dollar a year, and the cafeteria workers reportedly are paid so little that they are eligible for food stamps. And I'm sure that Tallahassee Memorial is not alone. So we need to give focus not just on Tallahassee Memorial, but on the plight of the working poor in Leon County, period, and what we can do, the fact, what we can do about the fact that Tallahassee has one of the highest Gini coefficients, which again is a measure of income inequality, not just in the state of Florida, but in the, but in the entire country. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holyfield. Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Commissioner Proctor pulling this item, and I also fully support the workshop idea. I just thought the timing was kind of interesting and wanted to add into this, which could be a part of the workshop, or we could defer this to an OEV conversation in the future, although I think I'd prefer the workshop. In briefing about, or blueprints in OEV this week, Ben Pingree mentioned the disparity study that we're conducting will reference the Harvard Report. They are going to be looking at some of these issues. And we also, some of us, I think, were at the Chamber Economic Forecast Meeting last week. Jerry Parrish from the Florida Chamber Foundation gave a great presentation, as did Katrina Roll and Bernice Cox from United Way on Alice. So I think this report is getting a lot more attention. Hearing the information from both United Way and Florida Chamber was very helpful. So I think this could work into some of the things that we're doing in our Economic Development Organization, OEV, but also other work we're doing at the county. So I just wanted to offer that, it might be nice to include Jerry or invite him to join us, but also have OEV staff and update on what we can do in the economic development and with the information we gain from Alice.
Does this make your motion? Have any objections to that?
No, sir.
Seeing no objection, we add it as amendment.
Thank you.
I see no other Commissioners in queue to speak. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor of motion on the floor for a workshop to include the amendments that Commissioner Dozier spoke of, and came by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on now to speakers. Citizens to be heard on the number of items. Do we have any speakers?
We do not.
Move to the General Business, Item Number 11, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This agenda item seeks the board acceptance of the Leon County Citizens Charter Review Committee's final report in consideration of the proposed charter amendments for placement on the 18th general election ballot. As you can see, Commissioners, from the item before you, the committee conducted a very thorough review process, as set forth in the charter, in evaluating the county's charter and recommending any revisions as might be appropriate to address any immediate or foreseeable issues, or as might be necessary to continue to reflect the preferences of our citizens. As such, included in your item, there are two recommendations for the four proposed charter amendments which emerged from that process, including one on ethics ordinance and the other on a more technical amendment having to do with the employment procedures of the county attorney to have consistency with those enumerated in the county charter for the county administrator. Before we go on to the speakers and before I hand it back to you, Commissioner, Chairman, just from a staff standpoint, we'd like to thank the Chair, Lee Hinkle, and also, of course, all of the Charter Review Committee members. Also, a big thanks to Heather Peoples, Nikki Peyton, and Sarah Pratt, and of course, the County Attorney's Office for the staff effort. We'll be scheduling a proclamation for this Charter Review Committee. And I also note, in addition to the one speaker we have, which is Ted Thomas, Neil Fleckenstein, and of course Kathy Jones have joined us too, and I hope I didn't miss anybody, but just wanted to get that in first. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to hand it off to you, and we'll accept, obviously, any questions that you might have.
We'll take the speaker first.
The first speaker is Ted Thomas.
Ted, how you doing, my friend? Name and address for the record. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Okay. My name is Ted Thomas, over at 1469 Bucrey, in Tallahassee, Street 2308. Commissioner, as a member of the Leon Charter Review Committee, I'm appearing before you for action. Please don't turn your back on 39,000 voters in Leon County who are registered as nonpartisan. These folks and you are at a threshold of becoming inclusive by accepting these voters in our primaries. Since 2010, when we had 19,000 NPAs, we now in 2018 have 39,000. That's a doubling of our NPAs in seven years, and I think it will be better. We can change our county charter from partisan to nonpartisan for all constitutional officers. 20%, 39,000 of registered voters in our county are nonpartisan, and as I said before, that number is growing. These individuals see positives and negatives from their parties, but uncomfortable accepting the position of party politics. In our county, we have nonpartisan elections for county commission, city commission, mayor, school board, supervisor of election, and all local and circuit judges. It's time for the Leon County Commission to approve a charter amendment to change the sheriff, property praiser, clerk of the court, and tax collector to nonpartisan. There is no basis to suggest that we don't elect Democrats, minorities, and women, as some individuals have suggested in our public hearing in our review committee. Let's look at the composition of our nonpartisan elected officials. The school board has five women to our minorities. City commission has a minority mayor and commissioner, and one female commissioner. Leon County Commission has two minority members and two females. The Democratic Party, if they in fact are fearful, we have only elected one Republican to all of our, our nonpartisan elections in our county. What a different political climate we'd have in our community and the nation if we just dropped the R and the D from statements made by individuals. If Mr. Smith and Ms. Smith were not identified for the party, we could study their arguments and make a decision based on the facts as we know them. It's time to move the issue to the forefront and not wait another eight years to convene a Constitutional Review Committee. Leon County, you have the opportunity and the charge to change our constitutional officers to nonpartisan. It's not about politics, it's about our community, and it's about our future. Put the nonpartisan election amendment on the November ballot and let the voters decide. In addition, I would also suggest that you discuss and vote on each constitutional officer separately. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll go now into Commissioner's discussion. I have no Commissioners in queue to speak. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I just want to echo first the county administrator's comments. Charter Review Committee did a tremendous amount of work in a short amount of time. I've watched some of those meetings, I'm sure you all did, and I think the discussion was pretty rigorous on a lot of issues. So thank you very much for Neil and Kathy who are in the room, and for all those who aren't, and for Ted as well, for your comments and for your service on the committee. I think that we've got two good recommendations, so can certainly move forward with the, with the suggested public hearing, forgive me, that was options one through three. Is that correct, Ms. County Administrator?
Yes, it would be.
Oh, I'm sorry. Canceling the others. Okay.
Obviously, depending on, there's a couple of either-or options that you have in there depending on which items you choose to advance to the ballot.
Okay. So with these options, we're going directly to public hearing for the two recommended amendments coming from the committee, right?
That is correct.
So I can wait if there's other discussion, but I would feel comfortable moving forward with these five options. I'll hold off on the motion for a second. The issue about nonpartisan constitutional officers, personally, that is not one of the discussions that I heard a lot about, or that I heard a lot from watching the committee meetings. So I'm kind of curious why the votes went the way it did, what some of those issues might be. I'm not sure if this is the time that we all want to get into it. Certainly, you know, we could leave time for the county administrator to let us know. But I do think the argument for nonpartisan elections is a good one. Certainly helping increase participation in our elections is something, I'm sure we all care about it. And I do think that the case is made by those who are currently elected to nonpartisan, that if there was any fear about party or minority set or anything like that, I am satisfied that those fears should not, or that they're not really germane to this subject. So I just feel like I would want to hear more about that one issue, and I could welcome that now or in the future. So again, I'll hold off, Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion, but I would love for that to come back with a little more information.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, Ted, Neil, who else isn't, who, Kathy, thank you. On a personal note.
First of all, Ted, Neil, who else isn't, who, Kathy, thank you, on a personal note for participating. As I've told each and every one of you, I am a nerd when it comes to process, and I believe in the process. And I know each one of you gave a lot of time to participate, and you did your homework, and you did it very well. I was very pleased with the outcome of the Charter Review Commission. I know you all worked very well together and very hard. Thank you. Heather, Nikki, and Sarah, I have heard nothing but amazing compliments about how you staffed the Charter Review Commission, which is extremely important, only happens every 10 years, and your professionalism is second to none, and I thank you for all that you all have done. Commissioner Dozier, I agree with you. The two proposals, now let me put my two cents in, then we'll talk process. Truth be told, the two proposals that are before us, the official proposals that came, we could actually do without going to ballot. I mean, with my discussions with the administration, the item dealing with the county attorney, and by the way, in all disclosure, that was my idea, because 10 years ago, we did the, through the charter amendment process, a supermajority hire and fire for the administrator, and somehow, we did not do the attorney's office at the same time. And so this year, it was my recommendation, yeah, we should just make it equal. But it's been brought to my attention that through further analysis, we can actually codify it in local ordinance, and it carries the same weight, and it does the same thing, it's just not in the charter. So we, I'm comfortable moving forward with it on the ballot. I'm also comfortable just taking care of it, but I do think it's an issue that we should address, just to make sure that both people that report directly to the commission are on par, and I do believe in that. The other issue is our ethics laws, the same thing. We can actually adopt our code of ethics in the local ordinance without it going through the process and put it in, or we can go through the process as recommended by the Charter Review, have the citizens approve it, and then go through it. I'm comfortable either way, to be honest with you. I'm a fan of the Charter Review Commission, these people have worked really hard. I don't have a problem moving forward with the public hearing and putting it on, and putting it before the citizens, and having a vote. That's how the process works. So I'm very comfortable with the notion on the table. Heather, when it comes to the issue that Mr. Thomas brought up regarding the nonpartisan, can you just refresh our memory on the discussion, and obviously, this was not, or, I'm sorry, Nikki or Sarah, or, I guess Vince or Herb. Obviously, this was not a formal recommendation that came from the Charter Review Commission, and what was their reasoning, after looking at it in great detail, for not recommending this?
Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, two things, I'll hit a very quick procedural item, then I'll defer to Herb on some of the legal analysis, but generally speaking, as was the case with all of these, they advance or stop during the process based on increasing levels of voting threshold, once the commission, the Charter Review Committee, rather, has the opportunity to deliberate those things. And that was the case certainly with this item, and there was certainly interest, as Mr. Thomas indicated, but ultimately, just didn't meet the level of voting threshold to advance to you as a proposed charter amendment. I think at least part of that reasoning is some judicial action and some things which may not be dispositive here locally, but that the county attorney weighed in throughout the process, and I'll defer to him on that.
Commissioner Sit, I don't want to say I influenced the vote, but I think I did a little, by cautioning that there is a case, two things are happening. There's a case that came out of Orange County, which went to the Fifth District Court of Appeal. Orange County lost. The court said, under the Constitution, you can make those other constitutional officers appointed, but you can't affect the way they are elected. So struck down their charter provision, making the other constitutional officers nonpartisan. That is currently, they have filed a request by writ of certiorari to the Florida Supreme Court to have that reviewed. That's going to be way beyond the November election date, before you'll get anything from the Florida Supreme Court. In addition to that, the Constitutional Revision Commission has a proposal that is being pushed along and has been fairly well received, in which the Constitution would be changed to say that charter counties cannot change anything about the constitutional officers. So my thinking and my advice was, if you did this and you put it on the ballot, there is a possibility, and it may be even a strong possibility, that you would have to undo it all the next year, or at the next general election. Why don't we wait to see how those two things turn out? There's nothing, you're not required to have a Charter Review Committee to put charter changes on the ballot, and so my thinking was, why don't you wait to see how those two things play out, and then if that's still of interest to the commission, we can put it on the ballot in 2020.
I understand. I was not aware of the court case. So let me get this straight, that if it goes on our ballot and passes for nonpartisan elections, but yet that provision is overturned, I mean, is upheld, excuse me, is upheld in the Orange County case, we would have to go back to the ballot to remove it from the charter, or is it just automatically stricken, or how does that work, Herb?
For us to do it voluntarily, you'd have to go back to the ballot. If you got sued, the court here said it's void, and it's therefore no longer in effect in Orange County, but I'd rather that we took action than waited till we got sued over it.
I understand, okay. I am in agreement with you, I was not aware of that. I would rather be in a position, Commissioner Dozier, to wait and see the outcome of this court case before we put the citizens of Leon County through possibly two ballot proposals, one to put it on, and then one to have to repeal it. But if it was overturned, that is something in the future that I would be in favor of putting on the ballot. Let me go ahead and on the record and say that.
And I think you will see something from the Supreme, well, there's two things that could happen. The Supreme Court could refuse jurisdiction and let the Fifth DCA decision ride, in which case, it was stricken, and that would be precedent, even here in the First District, when the Supreme Court refuses to take jurisdiction. Or they take jurisdiction, and you'll get a decision probably sometime in 2019.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, you were my appointment, and you did a fantastic job, and I certainly do appreciate it. I was not aware of the Orange County court case until the county attorney just walked us through. It's my position, I would rather wait to see what happens with the court case before having to put the voters through two election cycles in order to overturn it if it's not corrected in court. I know that's probably disappointing to you, because you're very passionate on this issue, and I appreciate the passion, but today, I think that's what my position's going to be.
There is, is Waculla County is nonpartisan. They are in our judicial district, and it hasn't been challenged. I would rather see us take a step in that direction and see the outcome. The different judicial districts often think differently and weigh differently. Because it happened in Orlando does not mean that it will happen in our judicial district. So I think that's pertinent, pertinent to the issue, pertinent to getting it on the ballot. So I think it's an issue that needs to be raised in our community, it's an issue that needs to be discussed in our community, and I think we need to leave it up to the voters. If the voters are concerned about the Fifth District's ruling and the Supreme Court weighing on it, so be it. They can make their decision based on their feelings for it and their concern for these judicial reviews.
So the issue tonight is what we're going to send towards the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, final decision will be made. I'm very comfortable either way, listening to my colleagues on the two that are proposed, and if there's someone that feels strong enough that wants to add the third one on, I do not intend to do so, but I would support that motion, at least to go to public hearing. On a final note, Mr. Chair, I have another issue that I'd like to bring up that addresses ballot language, although it is not part of the Charter Review Commission process. And so I'm asking for guidance, after this issue is done, may I address it, or would you rather me wait until commission time to address it as well? The only reason why I bring it up is because the common denominator which makes it germane is ballot language.
Let's just wait until after this issue and address it.
Okay, wonderful.
Since we are talking ballot language.
Thank you.
But I got Commissioner Lindley in line to speak, but I do want to hear, just real quick, if the commission wants to comment on it. Commissioner Daley brought up a very good point, in that two things that we're talking about doesn't necessarily have to go on the ballot, we could do those things up here. If the commission wants to entertain that, I'm willing to entertain that motion as well, but I just want to hear what the commission's opinion, I'm not pushing either way. Commissioner Lindley, have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That actually is one of the things I want to speak to. I didn't realize that we could do both of those through action up here, and I would support making a change for the county attorney and county administrator to be hired or released of their duties by supermajority vote. I think that is a business-like discussion and something we could handle here very easily. So I would support that. I wouldn't support, even though changing our ethics policy to an ordinance, even though we could do it, I really think that this is a great opportunity for us to have it go to a ballot, so that it does get discussion, it gets talked about, so the community would know that we do have this going on, that we're interested in it, and for some reason, that seems to rise above an administrative change. And I just feel like that would be very worthwhile, to go forward on the ballot, and so I can make a motion on that. But I did want to speak to the nonpartisan election of constitutional officers. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'm totally supportive of it, and I was before our Charter Review Committee started, and I still am, the challenges notwithstanding. I mean, there will always be challenges on this. In a way, I think if we put it on the ballot, it would probably stir up even more party political battles. I mean, we saw a little of it in the last year, when some of our constitutional officers chose to run as NPAs. It's a hot issue, I don't think it would go quietly onto the ballot and off the ballot, however. I think it's very worthwhile, and as you say, I think the future is to NPAs, people are really tired of both parties being so freaking in control of so much, you know, so I think NPAs are very appealing, I'm thinking about it myself. We up here demonstrate, we're NPAs, I mean, you seem to have isolated one person on here we think might be in our, but technically, we are nonpartisan up here, and we have been for a long time, so in terms of functioning, I think, you know, it might be more, it's a great idea. So I guess I would make a motion to move to public hearing the ethics question of putting that in an ordinance, and also putting on the ballot, or on to public hearing, a nonpartisan constitutional officers, give your office something more to do if necessary on down the road, but do a board discussion on the county attorney's slight shift in employment. So that would be my motion.
I'll second it.
So that's one, two, four, and five, plus the add-on?
I'm sorry, thank you for keeping track. One, two, yeah.
One, two, four, and five. Also, Mr. Administrator, Mr. Attorney, let me ask you this, could we also accept the hiring-firing modification during this item, and it be recognized as accepted by this board, or that be something we need to take up separately?
I'm taking from this motion that you wanted brought back as a separate-agended item for public, well, for a request for a public hearing to do an ordinance to that effect.
That's right.
Okay, sounds good. Motion on the floor is for one, two, four, and five, with a modification that we also add to the discussion, the conversation about nonpartisan, I guess, local elections?
Constitutional.
Constitutional, nonpartisan constitutional elections. Mr. Attorney, you have a comment?
Just to know that because you are bringing this up on your own volition, it requires a supermajority vote to pursue it. So I'm, based on the discussion, I think that's going to be pretty easy, but I just wanted to put into the record that it requires a five affirmative vote to do so.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, Commissioner Daley, I was unaware of the Orange County case, and I understand the argument that we may want to wait because these different things are working through the courts right now, or Constitutional Revision Commission at the state level, but I'm okay with moving forward with this item now. I think it is a statement on our community, on how things, from my perspective, from many perspectives, should be in lots of different races, in lots of different jurisdictions across the country. So Commissioner Lindley, I appreciate you putting that in, and if we have to come back in 2020, it just kind of elevates that issue for a discussion, if we have to undo it later. Hopefully, we won't get sued, we could take quick action, should the courts or Constitutional Revision come back with something else, correct, Mr. County Attorney? So with, having said that, I'm wondering if we need an agenda item on nonpartisan issues to get more public discussion, at least have that opportunity to hear from anyone else prior to the public hearing, or if the public hearing is sufficient, the public hearing might be sufficient, but since we are taking this up, and we weren't in the room, I assume most of us weren't, during our Charter Review Committee, it might be good to have an agenda item before April 10th. So just wondering, that would be the public hearing. If I, I don't know, Ms. County Administrator, do you have an opinion one way or another, if we should have another opportunity to have a discussion about nonpartisan races prior to the public hearing on the 10th, or will that be sufficient to really exercise the information?
It is legally sufficient, whether you wanted more would be purely a determination of the board. There were public speakers who came out and addressed the committee on that issue, and however, you would be able to accommodate that at your public hearing.
Okay. I'm comfortable going to the public hearing, but I think we need to really make sure we have time to hear from those speakers and others, since we're bringing up this issue. And the, I'm sorry.
What would be the timeframe for having this public hearing? Is there, I mean, I assume there is one?
Our plan in the agenda item is that the public hearing on the charter amendments would be scheduled for the April 10 commission meeting, and we would add this in as a public hearing then, too. Yes.
It's not long, but that's all right. This issue's been on the boards' discuss for years.
That's a good point, Commissioner Lindley. So one last thought, I'm fine with the motion where it is. I was leaning towards the county attorney being, issue being included in the charter just to have it in line with the county administrator, what happened the last time. I think that is really very much administrative, can go for the ordinance, but I just want to make sure there's no issues with having the county administrator in the charter and having the county attorney in the ordinance. That does not pose an issue in the future or anything like that, correct, Ms. County Administrator, or Mr. County Attorney?
No, in fact, it's pretty common.
It is, okay. I thought that was in the item, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Having it in the charter is just cleaner, because they're both in the same document.
That was my read of it.
That's the argument for putting it in. But the motion on the floor now does not include that.
Yes, sir. I am fine with the motion, I just, I think that was my read of it, that it might be cleaner to have the two in the same document, but I agree, it's a little complicated, it probably isn't necessary to put that on the ballot, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, can you give me a liberty real quick, sir? Can you give me liberty to say a couple of words real quick? I was actually at the Charter Review Committee when this issue was brought up, and I don't think it's as simple as us just saying up here we like to do it and sending it straight to public hearing. So I don't think I, for the reasons that, at that same meeting, there were constitutionals who actually spoke against nonpartisan constitutional elections, as well as other community groups with some interest in the way our districts are drawn, or drawn, and some interest in how politics work here in Leon County, that spoke against it as well. So I'm not as comfortable taking it straight to public hearing. Now, if you want to do an agenda item, allow those folks to come out, speak to you, say what they got to say, and then at that point, if we want to elevate it, we elevate it, I'm fine with that, but going straight to public hearing without hearing, without those folks being able to speak to the commission, and it being a part of a record, so the commission understands the opposition to it as well, I can't get there yet. So I can't support the motion on the floor for those reasons, it's not, I don't necessarily support it, I just know there was a lot of opposition at that meeting when they were talking about these issues, and the opposition needs to be heard during this process as well. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor? Regina, Regina, anyway. Regina, Regina, anyway.
Chairman, thank you for your patience, Commissioners. Ms. Chairman, I'd like to put forth the idea of a half-cent indigent sales tax to go on our ballot, and to join the other measure that have just hopped up on the wagon. Is this also the time to do that?
Can you bring it up after?
It's ballot language, but it's not necessarily constitution or charter language. So if you want to bring up ballot language, bring it up after we get through with this motion. I think Commissioner Daley had something that was ballot language as well. So I'm just asking that we just deal with Charter Review right now, and then after this item, I'll let any Commission that want to bring up other ballot languages, they want to bring up, to bring it up for consideration.
Well, what's not presented is whether or not with the motion on the floor, speaking to Commissioner Daley's interest and concern with process, is have we foreclosed Commissioners in this body being able to bring forth ballot measures? And it appears that the only measures which are open are those which have been contemplated previously by the Charter Review Commission.
No, sir. Commissioner Daley, was your issue contemplated by Charter Review?
Yes, sir.
No. So if you want to bring it forward, I'm just asking to bring it forward after Charter Review.
I just want to be on the same equal
Yes, sir.
... plan field with that. I think that, as I've listened to the discussion, it's amazing that it's taken about, you know, one person off of a committee who's on the losing side of the vote, to come up here and to actually entice this board from the losing side, that one person, when we appointed an entire committee, which gave much deliberation, I too said in two of the meetings, when these matters came forward. So I'm just really, as a matter of process, I'm really spooked that we've heard zero, zilch, except for Commissioner Lindley thinks it's a great idea, and a couple others, it's a great idea. And this particular issue was, it was wrestled on the mat, and it has great volumes of discussion from leading citizens. We each placed citizens who were, we thought that were of measure to sit on this deliberative body, and they did so. To the extent that we have failed to give any deliberation, anything, to know why the losing side of this has come forward. Thank you, Regina. Is, I mean, what I want to present to you all is actually the Charter Review findings. This is what it looks like, okay? You don't know how much talk, this is what went into it. We hopped up here in three minutes' time, and these people went through much dialogue to give us a package which we don't have before us. Here it is, right here. Our county attorneys, it is rare that we, as a deliberative body, have crossed the line and gone beyond what he has recommended. And his recommendation was persuasive to persons not elected, who he didn't exactly could be fired by them. But from persons who are elected, his advice is given less consideration. It's frightening, spooky. And to the extent that Walcolor County is down there operating, and Mr. Thomas cites Walcolor, Walcolor County is not the model county of county governance at any standard that I'm aware, that I'm aware of. And we have on this dais, the international president of city and county attorneys advising us. We have on the telephone Brian Deloge, the immediate past president of the National Association of Counties. And Mr. Thomas brings Walcolor County to the table, and we sit as if Walcolor's the circuit of the second exceeds the thought, the influence, the intellectual weight of what is coming out of the Fifth in Orlando. I certainly do not view a deliberative judicial decision out of Orlando as being inferior to, that ain't going to carry more weight than Walcolor County in what they do down there. Not saying what they do is wrong. I'm just saying I don't know that they are standard by which anybody emulates as a process. So the county attorney has advised, and I'm going to stick with that advice, because that's why we pay him all that money. And not only do we think so well of his advice, but we're willing to say that, to secure his position, we respect him so much, that we're not willing to let him go on a simple majority for three. We need a majority plus one. He's that significant. We think that highly. We regard him that much, that not even a simple majority can let him go. Yet we're voting and acting counter to what we're sending to the ballot. Something is incongruent. Now, to what you will find in these pages, because I sat through at least two of the hearings, and the chairman sat through hearings, so, is that the Republican Party in Leon County simply seeks to do, by way of having no kind of identification of party, they're trying to do through the back door, they're trying to sanitize the appearance of anybody's party, and they can't, because they can't win on the ballot when they identify who they are. And the fact that they can't win an election in this county means they need to get with the majority of the people in how, in what we do, what we think, our values, what we represent. That's the problem here. This is a backdoor effort, that people who are Republicans can't be identified in front of the community of Leon. So keep the mask off. Don't put a hood on. Don't put a sheet on by us not being able to see your faces, what you stand for, is your aura, is your D, what you is. And we want to take all of that away. And voters should have the right to know in a time like this, when party is everything. We had a vote all the way from the United States Congress, all the way down to Florida's legislature, last week, on guns. And people voted straight R and D. No variation, no difference. How can we afford to lose our identities? That's like throwing your last name off your last name. You know, I ain't going to go by, I'm not going to go by Lindley no more. I ain't going to use Long. I'm not a Daley. I'm just, I'm just John. You can't throw away your last name. That's how people know who you is. And when you throw away your D, your D is how people know who you is, in politics, and how you, what you stand for, what you likely to do. So, so I'm absolutely going to stay with my county attorney, and I'm going to think that, that a judicial decision out of Orlando is a weightier matter than whatever going on in Walcolor. That's not persuasive to me, Mr. Thomas. It was not even persuasive to the council and the people you sat with. They ran over this idea. And I'm not willing to overlook the people who we asked to serve, and without even thinking twice to this volume of information, that we're willing to say, oof, on them. Nope, can't do. I believe that if somebody is running for a public office in this county, precedents have been established. You stand up, we need to know your party. I need to know your party. I want to know. But for the Republicans who can't whip nobody, Deloge, you whipped some people, Democrat, but that's because you've proven the value of what you stand for. But if you can't beat them, maybe you need to join them. But for us to just hide who we are, to give greater probability to Republicans taking over these constitutional offices, is something that this body should not do, period. Chairman, I could go on, but I can't support the motion. Thank you.
May I just?
Commissioner Lindley?
Well, Commissioner Proctor, you got elected as a nonpartisan candidate, and all of us here did. And I think the fact that 39,000 voters, twice of what's, who were registered as nonpartisan, no party affiliates, seven years ago, is testimony to not that party is everything, but that party is too much in many instances. These are largely administrative jobs, clerk of the court, property appraiser, tax collector, the sheriff, a little bit different, I will agree. But I'd like to hear what the citizens of this county say.
You just right here.
The citizens of this county did not all attend this. I respect the work of that.
You represent them, love.
And I am not responding to Ted Thomas's two or three minutes. I actually think for myself, read for myself, listen to things, and have for quite some time. And so I think it was persuasive. I also feel the same way about our county attorney. He's fabulous. I'm sure he's got our back in whatever unwinds from this. But I would love to hear from the citizens of Leon County, the 39,000 who have registered as NPAs, those who have registered as Democrats and Republicans. You are an NPA for all practical purposes. All seven of us up here are. And, you know, so if that means you lost your last name, I don't think so. I think your last name is profoundly well-known around here. And I love the Charter Review Committee's work. Thank you very much. But it's not the end-all, be-all, and I feel perfectly free to object to some of it, add to, or subtract from. I think that's our job right here, as nonpartisan elected officials.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindley. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Thank you all the Commissioners for your comments. I'll say again, I don't, my vote in dissent here was, it seems it's going to be, is squarely because I feel like there was some conversation that's germane to what we're trying to decide here. And I just would have liked to take it a little slower with an agenda item, and then elevated this issue up to a public hearing. But with that being said, we're moving now to a vote. Motion on the floors for items?
Can you restate it?
Yes, please.
The motion is option two, plus the nonpartisan of constitutional officers, proposed constitutional amendment, plus scheduled public hearing for the county attorney's issue to be scheduled for April 10th.
Commissioners, I understand the motion.
Is that one, two? Which numbers are they?
One, two, four, five, with the modification. Motion was made by Commissioner Lindley, I believe, and seconded by Commissioner Daley. All those who favor the motion on the floor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Those?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to two. We'll move on now to item number 12.
Chairman?
Yes.
Before we start, would you like, you want me to wait?
Now, let's go ahead and bring it up now, since we're talking about ballot language.
Great.
Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, the reason why I bring this before you is because I think the timing is right. Very rarely do we actually talk about putting language on the ballot for the citizens to approve for major issues. This is something that I have been thinking about for quite some time, and let's face it, we have all been engaging in conversations for many, many, many years. Quite simply, I would like to make a motion that we bring an agenda item back before this board to study and to approve the creation of a Children's Services Council, as established in Chapter 125.901 Florida statute. It has been created in nine different counties with great success. By our action, what we'd be doing, if it made it all the way, is have an agenda item, and if the agenda item is approved, then it would go on to public hearing. And I would suggest that we do it on the public hearing of April 10th, when we take up the other ballot language. And if approved, it would go to the ballot. In essence, we would be creating a special independent district in Leon County that would have its own taxing authority, as approved by the citizens, dedicated to serve the children and children's issues of Leon County. When we talk about economic disparity issues, health disparity issues, when we talk about just about any issue that we have up here, there is always a common denominator when we talk about our children. And this is something that we are all very passionate about, and we do come from different angles on it. I am tired of talking about this issue, and I'm ready for some action. I think that there will have great community support. I think it would have great bipartisan support. If we look at the example of Miami-Dade, when Miami-Dade put this on the ballot, you had Democrats and Republicans from all walks of life, including former Governor Jeb Bush himself, that came out and wholeheartedly endorsed it. I think that this is a conversation that the citizens of Leon County want to have. I think it's very important to our community. So I would like to make the motion that we bring back an agenda item for the sole purpose of creating a Children's Services Council under Chapter 125.901 Florida statute, and if approved by this body, that we establish the public hearing on this issue for April 10th, along with the Charter Review. Now, mind you, this is not part of the charter, okay? This is not proposed as being a Charter Review amendment. This is completely separate, but it is ballot language. But I think we are in a position to truly make a positive difference, and I'm ready to go. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded by Commissioner Daley, seconded by our vice chair. Now, Commissioner Dozier, cue to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Daley, for bringing this up. I think that this is an issue that has come up many times, I'd say, over the last four, eight-plus years. I do think it's something, in my conversations about this over the years, this is a unique time, and a lot of the issues that we've been talking about, from redeveloping the Orange Avenue apartments and purpose-built communities, to housing, to crime set, all of these things could be better served, or we could get ahead of those issues by dedicating more funding for children. And we know the need is greater than anything CHSP, our grants can cover, or other grants. And we've got some changes happening with that, we just approved. So I am fully supportive of this. One question, you just mentioned the April 10th public hearing. I would be very interested in having an agenda item on this issue to flesh out some of it. My understanding was that it's not an independent tax authority. I think that some people may think they've got a lot more authority than they may otherwise have. It's up to a certain level. I think, you know, the coalition that may be coming together on this is really intriguing. It is bipartisan and nonpartisan. Yes, it's tri, any partisan, let's say. There's a lot of people interested in this. So I think it would serve us well to start educating ourselves, educating the public, and I'm not sure if it needs to go to the public hearing on April 10th, although I'm certainly in favor of moving it forward, however way we could do that. And one last comment, and I appreciate it, if you want to chime in, that in looking at this issue, I hadn't looked at the statute in a few years. There are probably examples from those other nine counties about operating, maintaining the organization that we could start taking a look at now to prep for this, should it pass in our community. But also, I think that what we're doing with CHSP, the data collection from the online applications, other things, the needs assessment that you have to establish for this, we've got a lot of that. So I just wanted to add those things, because we've been working towards this for years without even knowing that. That was my read of it. So again, thank you for bringing it up, and I'd just love a little more time to dig into it, but certainly focus on November of this year.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. On point?
On point. Could not agree with you more. And in fact, the motion, I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, the motion is to bring an agenda item back first, so that staff has the time to say, okay, this is what you're going to put on a ballot, this is exactly what it looks like, this is how it operates. We can flush out all of our issues at that time. If this Commission decides to move forward and accept that agenda item, then it would go to a public hearing on April 10th. I only suggested April 10th, because that's when we're dealing with the other ballot language. So yes, you are correct. My objective would be, obviously, between now and April 10th, to have the agenda item come back for us for consideration. So you got one more stop before it actually would go to public hearing, so two stops before it would actually go to the ballot. Great point.
On point.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Daley. Great clarification. I would just love to hear from the county administrator if, our next meeting is March 27th, that would be the only agenda, or commission meeting, that we could consider that agenda item before April 10th. Is that enough time to tackle this issue? Is that enough time to tackle this issue, given budget and everything else? And Commissioner Daley, I want to move it forward as well quickly, I think that's what you're really focused on.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, in terms of the analysis and the turnaround of the, that's not a problem at all. Herb and I were just adding up on our fingers and toes here whether we had the public notice requirements met between the 27th and the 10th, that would be the only issue. The turnaround on the item is not, it would just be a public hearing issue. So again, if we meet the advertising requirements, then it would be just as, just like Commissioner Daley stated. If not, we would just plan accordingly for the public hearing, once we've met the public hearing requirements.
So we could focus on March 27th for the agenda item, and April 10th, or as soon as possible, for the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner Daley.
Commissioner Linley?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very supportive of this. I think honestly, some of the issues that could come forward in this discussion merge, I think Dr. Hollifield is gone, but come very close to matching a lot of the information from the Alice report on the working poor, and what we heard from the Florida Chamber of Commerce, as well as our own local one. It also, you know, it speaks to the problems we've had in this community about fighting crimes. Some of these councils have taken on teenage crime. We have school dropouts. So I think the opportunities here are profound for us to do something positive. And man, if I, I can't remember a time I've wanted something positive to be going on more than right now, following the tragedies we've had in our state, one after another. The matter of the, I believe it's a half, up to a half a mill tax that would be a company, that would be very well worth discussion, and I'm sure it will be, premier. But I think this is a wonderful idea, from everything I've heard, it's, there are hardly any naysayers. We'll hear from them, there will be some, I'm confident, or just those against, I shouldn't be derogatory about that, but I'm totally supportive of this, and I hope we can move forward. We absolutely have that April deadline for ballot language, is that right? Or, no? So we, what is it?
There's a lot of things I'm doing in on this at the same hearing. You're kind of late in the middle of the office.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that gives a little, right, thank you.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, Commissioner Daley, I appreciate your motion as well. I think that taking the bold move as a county commission, and not waiting for a move from the state, or not waiting for a move from our national government, is key to reaching these kids. And it means even more to me, serving in a school that serves children, and we're talking about every single day, and realizing that early intervention, or services offered to the family or the children, prior to them reaching school age, many, many, many times, is the key to not only academic success, but success later on in life, and breaking that chain of poverty, and breaking that generational setting that some families are locked into. Serving at a Title I school, I see it daily, on the hour, and it means a lot to me that we would take the boldness of, obviously, in the end, it would be the voters' choice, but I think that it's a big move and a big step forward for our commission to consider it. So I appreciate it, and we'll support it.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm hopeful that the stance that we're uttering for our voices won't change when those persons, in particular people like the Chamber of Commerce, that opposes increase of millage. There are people who will stand out, and they don't care if it's a poor woman and her child, and they will oppose it. I mean, such was the case when we tried to do indigent, a half cent for poor mothers and children. And you'd be surprised, the people who eat well, who don't care if others can see the doctor. So if we're going forward, you know, let's lock arms, and of course, we will listen to anybody, but if it's a conviction of the heart, we should be willing to stand and not cave in to the opposition forces, which you'd be surprised how they will assemble if you say a, what is it, a half mill?
Up to.
Up to a half mill. And then, you know, you guys begin to melt away, and I'm standing here thinking that we've been locked arms and cut our fingers and become blood brothers and sisters, and joined finger to finger. And you guys melt, don't melt, don't melt for the children. The Alice report says to us that how many families with children are struggling. And in Leon County, Commissioner Jackson, you'd be surprised that Tallahassee Southwest, 76% of the families is struggling. It makes sense, and the data is saying that supporting this is very important. In Tallahassee Central, 68% of the families with children are struggling. Mr. Daley, Tallahassee Northwest, 60% of families are struggling. Tallahassee South, 55% of families with children are struggling. And Commissioner DeLoge, your numbers are very respectable, but in North, East Tallahassee, 16% of families with children are struggling. So there are reasons for Commissioner Daley, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Proctor, and at large commissioners, to have an interest in these unbelievable numbers that have been presented to us in the Alice report. So information today undergirds my commitment to looking at the policy matter that has been brought before us. But I would like also, Mr. Chairman, at the weak disposal of the issue before us, to present another issue.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do think this is in line with a lot of the different things that we're focused on, for sure. And forgive me, Mr. Chair, I thought Commissioner Proctor was going to introduce the other item he mentioned a little while ago, and that's why I got in queue to speak. So if you were waiting on my comments, I was actually thinking about, about the other sales tax initiative that Commissioner Proctor had mentioned. So I'll go ahead and make my comment, but I don't want.
About the other one?
About, well, just about the whole issue in general. I think these two things are related, so I can go ahead and mention it now, and then we'll let Commissioner Proctor make his comments.
Yes.
I think that, Commissioner Jackson, you see it every single day, front and center, and I think you hit the right phrase here, it's the early intervention. And I think the Alice report, other things, do highlight, and we heard it the other day, the gap, particularly for families with children, or for single parents with kids, how they can just fall off a cliff, and there are very little services. I do think that this, what this initiative is a way to help those families as well. And I'm not sure it would be in our interest to pursue multiple different funding mechanisms that are focused on the same population at the same time. So again, without jumping ahead of Commissioner Proctor, Mr. Chair, I just decided to go ahead and make that comment, but that would be my feeling of caution going into this, and that I think the Children's Service Council is a mechanism to help families in general, even though it's focused on children. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeLoge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea conceptually, as far as focusing in this area. My only reservation, and I look forward to the agenda to discuss this, is if you look at our history with the Innovation Park, and with the Civic Center, and with the EFA, and I know you guys have heard me talk about this, we create entities, we turn them loose, and then literally, it's, they're on their own. And unfortunately, this is setting up a separate form of government, effectively. They have taxing authority, they'll have a board, they'll have staff. I'd be more inclined to say, if we've got an issue we want to deal with, let's deal with it internally and take the hit. If people say they want to spend the money on some issue, and I'm all in, then I would say, let's us take the hit and make the hard decision. But that's the way I would kind of flesh it out when we get to the agenda discussion. I mean, I conceptually think I'm all in as far as trying to find some ways to solve some of these early intervention problems, but I just want to be hesitant and cautious on the structure we're creating if we go down this path. Thank you.
Yes.
Just for clarity on the subject, Commissioner DeLoge, you've raised valid concerns in the past about creating separate entities. I just want to, from my reading of this, make a distinction here, I'd love for this to come back in the agenda item. Innovation Park and EFA don't receive any tax dollars. I mean, they have issues, having served.
I know, realistically, they don't receive tax dollars, but they had funding sources that were outside, that they controlled, and, you know, it's just a separate entity. And in this case, it's even different, because they can raise and lower taxes at will on the board, up to the half a mill number. I, it just strikes me that we're creating another organization and another set of administration when we could probably do it internally if we wanted to take the hit and take the heat and felt strongly about, enough about it. But that's just an opinion, and I'd rather than go and diving down into it, talk about it when we get into the agenda, but just one man's opinion. Thanks.
And, Mr. Chair, that's exactly what I was going to say, Commissioner DeLoge, was I would love some highlight of distinguishing between different types of independent authorities or special districts, because my reading of the Children's Service Council is very, very different, and different reporting, and different structure, and I think that is why that agenda item, Commissioner Daley, that you've asked for, is so important. So if, Mr. County Administrator, to address Commissioner DeLoge's question, which others may have as well, if we can have some information in the item about distinguishing between these different types of districts or organizations, I think that would be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner DeLoge, anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm good.
Thank you. I've done some research on this, I've looked over the nine districts that actually have it, or counties that actually have it, and it has done some very good things. I don't think we can walk away from this and just, you know, talk about all the good things it's going to do without talking about the fiscal impact it may have, given the fact that we're also looking at a homestead exemption vote coming up as well. And so the only thing I'm going to ask for is for, when it comes back in the agenda item, that, Mr. County Administrator, that you include in that, in the item, what kind of fiscal impact, what we've contemplated as far as our millage rate, as well as if this passes, what, you know, half a mill or whatever would be proposed, would look like for our constituents. I just think we need to go in with our eyes wide open, and we need to let the constituents know what exactly it looks like, so. But I do support the initiative, I support what you guys are trying to do, I mean, I support what the Student Council stands for altogether. I think it helps children from neighborhoods that I grew up in, and that's what I'm all about. So I look forward to the agenda item, but I think we need that full breadth of information in it, in order to make a good, informed decision. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I think the fiscal understanding is really important, particularly in tandem with the property tax amendment exemption. Also, I'd just be interested if that could be tied into what we already contribute through our CHSP funds, just so we get a big picture of how that, you know, the whole financial picture.
Yes. Show us the numbers.
I have Commissioner Proctor in queue, Commissioner Proctor, is this about your issue? Can we dispense of the vote here?
I just wanted to say, I think you hit it, that we would incrementally look at what a one-eighth looks like, what one-fourth looks like, what that one-half mill looks like. And I think what you were saying is, but specifically, eighth, fourth, and half.
Now, with understanding, now, I think we all understand this, if this went to ballot and it passed, we would have no jurisdiction over what they levied at all. I just want to know what those fiscal, what the fiscal impact will look like at its maximum, considering also what would happen if homestead passed as well. So I look forward to the item coming back with the information, as well as the rest of information, and then what other counties are doing, how well they're doing with this, with Children's Services Council as well. The motion made on the floor by Commissioner Daley, seconded by Commissioner Jackson, for agenda item to come back on the 27th, in reference to creating the Children's Services Council, with language for the ballot to be contemplated as well, that will come back on April the 10th, if possible. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, you can say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries without objection, and we'll move on now. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor.
Very simple, following the same, pretty much, thought, I think the data that drives the Children's Council is the same data that speaks to our need for a healthcare services council. And actually, if I can remember right, Alan, it was a group called MRSA, out of Texas, 10, 12 years ago, that did a study on health. And we found that, surprisingly, that women and children in our community were not faring well, and that they were not faring well. And was that the MRSA report that we had 10, 12 years ago?
It was.
And somewhere out of Texas, I believe, they came here. And preceding the Alice report, which is a lot more specific to the geographic areas of our county, we've had data on the chef that speaks to the need for health services. And amplifying that 12-year-old data on the chef is cheating, cheating. It just hit my mind when I seen you. I need to talk to you. I just, I'm just scattered thoughts. Thank, glad to see. But it amplifies our report, it amplifies what we knew from 12 years ago. And what we did with that information is that we, we put it on the ballot, and I thought that with the warm hearts that are here on this desk today, that we would give voters the chance to vote up and down, a similar measure, but as opposed to children's health broad, but children's health, rather, health for those persons who don't have access. So therefore, Mr. Chairman, I want to off of the motion. I don't have the scaffolding right before me, but it's a lot, it mimics the thought trend in scaffolding, I imagine, of Commissioner Daley. Or if the county administrator wanted to give us a brief take of what that previous framework would have been juxtaposed to the framework and model or style, which we just voted on Commissioner Daley's, and which might be the smarter approach of what we tried to do years ago, as the approach that we've just voted on from Commissioner Daley, the more exacting need.
I could do that now at a very high level, or I could include it in the analysis, in the agenda item, whatever the board would like. But generally speaking, Commissioner Proctor, what we were pursuing last time was the indigent healthcare surtax, which is authorized by counties, it falls under our discretionary sales tax cap, of which we still have a half cent of capacity, that's what we were seeking to do then. And that initiative came prior to any nationalized primary healthcare initiative, and what the MRSA report showed.
Eventually, you know I'm ahead of my time, go ahead.
Yes, sir. And what the MRSA report showed at that time was that we had roughly 30,000 uninsured in the community. In terms of the allowable uses of the proceeds, however, as I recall, the statute relating to the local government infrastructure, oh, the local government, rather, healthcare surtax, it's very narrow. It's very narrow to primary healthcare for the uninsured and for the indigent in the community, whereas, as opposed to this, this is an independent special district, which has, again, up to .5 mills, different revenue structure, obviously, property taxes, up to .5 mills, for a much broader, if you will, just to .5 mills, for a much broader, if you will, ability to address a myriad of children's issues in the community. That's it at a very high level.
Thank you so much, Ms. County Administrator. Commissioners, I don't want to belabor the point, I think that you are all aware of our previous strides. Commissioner DeLoge, I know that they say that, Ray Charles said that they say that time can mend a broken heart, but time has stood still since we've been apart. But I can't stop loving you, that was Ray Charles. Commissioner DeLoge, I want you to know that we need you, I need you, and people who still can't go to the doctor need you. And I know that it was within your desire stated then, which I recall, that you would walk again along this journey, that we might expand and do something with the spance of an expanding canopy, Ms. Valls, that we can also supply healthcare access for the overall reach of betterment of children and their safety. Last week, finally, Mr. Chair, we saw children come to our community from Douglas School, Parkland, and they were asking for care, they were asking to be protected, they were asking to be kept safe from harm. And today, Commissioners, I'm asking for safety for children to be kept from the measles, the mumps, the diseases, the this, the that. And, you know, more than guns kill children, you don't need an AR-15 to kill a child. But the inability for them to go to the doctor in a timely and needed way will also kill a child. And we can kill less children if we at least give to our community the option of deciding if they want to. So my motion mimics what we just heard, and that we would allow staff to bring back a review of this matter, as we've considered a number of things as to what may go to the ballot in the fall.
Your second's a motion?
Motion does, for lack of a second. Commissioner DeLoge?
Commissioner Maddox, Mr. Chair, forgive me that. I jumped ahead of your comments, Commissioner Proctor, but I do think we have to be very careful, looking at anything that goes to the ballot and putting on too many different, and we haven't made a decision on Children's Services Council, certainly, but our community is willing to fund different initiatives, blueprint sales tax, when we really, we understand and go through the process and know that we've got value coming from it. But I also think we are, we could be hitting a ceiling at some point. We, as Commissioner, or Mr. Chair and others have mentioned, and I feel this way as well, we need to look at the fiscal impact. So I do think, as the county administrator said, the Children's Service Council could cover a lot of the needs that you talk about with healthcare. We also have the ACA now available. So if we want to include a little bit of information about the sales tax in the agenda item, I'd be open to that, but I truly believe that the Children's Service Council could cover more issues, including healthcare, and that that's where my focus would be going into it. But I didn't want to leave you hanging, because you made a lot of good points about the need for healthcare, it's true. But I think the council is where, at least for me, I would like to see the commission put our focus at this point.
I'm just pleased, Mr. Chairman, that prior to President Barack Obama's placement as President 44 of the United States, that I had attempted to bring sort of a universal healthcare to this community. So again, I was ahead of the time.
Yes, you were.
And I remain so tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir. But, you know, Commissioner Proctor, when you brought it up, my first thought was, I did want more information about it, but I wanted it in the context of the agenda item that was coming back with the Children's Services Council. Commissioner Daley, and I believe your second was, who, was your second?
Commissioner Jackson.
Oh, Commissioner Jackson. Would you be willing to have some of that analysis for what Commissioner Proctor talked about come back in your item with the thought that I would like to see how many of those children can be served with, by Children's Services Council, that would also be served by the indigent healthcare sales tax that Commissioner Proctor's talking about?
Well, programmatically, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Point. I heard that there were nine of these existing. Are they all exactly replicas of each other, or does each community get to tailor?
They tailor.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to know, you know, how much we, how much, I'm not saying all of it needs to be, I just want to know how much of what he's, what Commissioner Proctor was asking for could be accomplished with a portion sum, or just a program within this Children's Services Council, because I believe Commissioner DeLoge said the second ago that some of the concerns that he has can be addressed by the sales tax itself. So I'm not asking, I'm just asking what it would look like.
Well, I can answer that right now. Serves all children Leon County, it does not discriminate against any type of background, socioeconomic level. I mean, they put that on all their flyers.
Yes, sir.
Serves all children. Now, I think what will be interesting is when the analysis comes back, to see when it comes specifically to healthcare, which I'm right there with you, Commissioner Proctor, you know, the great impacts that they've had in the other nine counties that have created, and then also allowing us to be able to identify the great strides that we can make in Leon County as well, I think it's going to become very clear that this is a pathway towards success.
Thank you.
But the short answer is, because they advertise that, all children within the geographic district, they serve.
All right. So does that provide enough? Okay. Any other direction, Commissioner Proctor, or comment?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on now to item number 12. Commissioners, it's about 4:40, I would like to at least get to item 16, maybe, 17, if possible? 12, Mr. Administrator? Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, this item is on the agenda at the request of the commission to provide guidance with regard to opioid health issues, epidemic is the term that's frequently used. The path at the present time for many local governments around the country, and some here in Florida, including at least four counties currently, is to pursue litigation against the pharmaceutical companies, the distributors, and some of the providers of opioids. Most recently, Alachua County filed a lawsuit. Some of these lawsuits are filed in federal district court and then have been consolidated, if you would, in the Ohio Federal District Court. Others have been filed in circuit court. It remains to be seen whether or not those are transferred to the federal court level or not. Couple of counties and cities are going through the RFP process to determine whether or not they should select a firm through that methodology. So the question before you today is, one, do you wish to pursue this matter through a lawsuit, as other local governments have? So that's a yes or no? And then if you decide that you wish to pursue that, how do you want to go about retaining a firm or firms that have the expertise in the area? None of the people that I just mentioned have done it in-house, because that's, it requires a significant amount of workload and a significant amount of expertise in this pharmaceutical area. So that next question is, if the first question is answered affirmatively, then the next question is, do you wish us to pursue an RFP and bring it back to the board, or do you want to just direct the county attorney's office to select one or more firms from the laundry list of firms that are already taking on these cases?
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an army of legal that is already assembled, not sure our need to, and what additional would we add, other than to give velocity to this strong arsenal of legal teams from across the country. Herb, what is the remedy that is being sought, and what is the cause of action that is being lodged?
Depending upon which case you look at, the relief being requested is damages, monetary damages.
So only those who have signed on might get paid?
That's the argument, at least, or the fear, if you would, that if you don't get a place in line, then if a settlement is reached, it is only going to be those who are litigants at the time.
Okay, so when I worked with Governor Childs in Fonville, and that team did the tobacco settlement, I think Governor, I think it was a $13 billion settlement, and that was an era when you didn't use billion, you know, loosely every day. And I still can't remember the mechanics of the distribution, but the monies came to Florida, and it came into, I think, a trust fund, which was designated for specific causes. Unfortunately, when those called Republicans came into power, I'm glad, you know, we distinguish they had a different idea what to do with the recovered funds from. But what would we do with funds recovered, and in the scheme of Florida, is it on the percentages of people who we know are opiate, if that's the right way of saying it, affected, impacted? Does each county get a pro-rata share relative to their size in terms of the state split? And I'm just curious about the cost and benefit. We don't want to spend $200,000 in legal fees and don't recover but $20,000. I mean, if I'm going to buy a lottery ticket, I don't want to spend a million dollars for a ticket and ain't going to get but, you know, $200,000, you know, for winning a ticket.
At the present time, the belief is that damage awards would go to individual plaintiffs, so not to a pool for the state, individual counties. We would have to prove how much we are out of pocket, if you would, in the damages, not only costs at the jail, ambulance services, all of those sorts of things. The division would be very much like the oil spill. We received, Leon County received a proportionate share of that. So if you go to trial, all the way through trial, then it would be what we would prove. If somehow the pharmaceutical companies agree, and there is at least some reason to believe that they may be willing to put money on the table, then it would be some sort of proportionate distribution. But in order to be a participant, you have to be in line.
Most speculative, I mean, we don't want to, I wouldn't want to vote blindly, not knowing at least a speculative amount of what this could cost. I think that, I mean, the shakedown of, I mean, we can shake them down out of some money, and we've signed up, and I think that the BP effort and the amount of money that nearly everybody got some, then we don't want to miss it, even the payoff comes. So we can galvanize resources and shake the pharmaceuticals down, and we know that, and it's going to be proven, much in the way that the research, and what proved that tobacco thing, was that the tobacco companies set on information that they never disclosed, when the research, which they paid for, was never disclosed that cigarette smoking and cigarettes and tobacco was harmful to people's health. So it was what they covered up, that, and do we have that kind of data to place against these pharmaceuticals?
I just have to ask a question.
Your point?
I just have to ask, I thought that the question before us today is whether we want to do a request for proposal, or have the county attorney select outside counsel that would handle this matter in the event it comes to us.
Yes.
Isn't that right? I mean, in which case I would move option two, which is a request for proposal, to hire outside counsel to handle all these many questions, if and when, probably when, they come forward.
I wasn't ready for a motion, Commissioner.
I'd second that.
Okay. Chairman, I feel, because your own point, Commissioner Linley, Commissioner Proctor had the floor.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Proctor?
Okay, okay. Prior to, and as a part of my constructive reflections on this matter, I'm merely, Commissioners, asking to understand the ground game, which would tilt the balances on whether or not I would support a RFP to pursue this. So Herb, as I was attempting to ask, with the tobacco issue, and this is a big, big, big case, it was the tobacco companies sitting on information and research that told them cigarette and tobacco is harmful to human beings' health, and that they did not share that, disclose it, and hid it. I think the courts dropped a hammer on them. Are you saying that there is a smoking gun of data and information that we are sitting similarly that can go against the pharmaceuticals? That's the question I'm asking.
I have seen data that would indicate that they generated, if you would, studies that tried to prove that none of these were addictive, and published that information to physicians, saying, "Don't worry, oxycodone is not an addictive substance." And so there's a fraud count in many of the lawsuits.
Okay.
And you were concerned, by the way, also on the fees. I've not seen a single contract with any of the other local governments that was not a contingency fee basis.
Okay.
25% is the going rate. We would have to front expenses, but to the extent that we negotiated such a contract, I would want that to be capped at some number, so we knew what that was.
Okay, I could be willing to do that, and particularly if there's been fraud or willful and intentional negligence on the part of these companies to unleash products which would injure and hurt the citizens of Leon County, I think that we should step aggressively to bring resolution to such perpetrators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioner Linley, thank you for sending that motion for me. The floor is yours, though. You were next in queue to speak.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say what I said before, which I would be moving option two.
Option two has been moved by Commissioner Linley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeLoge, I have Commissioner DeLoge in queue to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So option two is to issue the request for proposals. Is that right? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Linley, I was thinking along the same lines. I think an RFP is standard business for us and should be in this case. So I appreciate that. I had similar questions about whether or not we should get into this and what some of the facts are in the case, but I am persuaded that a lot of people are looking at this, and should there be a settlement? I think it is in our interest to get in line, and I don't want to put more weight on the county attorney's office, who has a lot to do right now. So I'll be supportive of this item. I'm not a fan of litigation just for the sake of litigation, for sure, but it does seem like there are some persuasive issues in this case. It's going to be interesting to see how it unfolds, so, thank you.
Commissioner Linley, thank you for your motion. I also agree with the fact that we should send this out for RFP, that is what we've done regularly, and I don't see any reason for us to break that trend now. Commissioner DeLoge, you have the floor, and then we'll go to a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've mentioned this before, we have 5% of the world's population, we have 25% of the world's incarcerated population, and we consume as a country 80% of the world's opioids. And if you don't think those last two are related, we're missing something. And I think this is going to be an ongoing issue for us as a county and as a country and local government, and so this is one step to try and maybe stem the tide. And I think that the appropriate prudent thing to do is to issue the RFP and try and get in line and at least start putting our hand up and saying, "This isn't working for us," and maybe participate in whatever, you know, if there is a lawsuit, some kind of funds that will flow the other way. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for option two made by Commissioner Linley, second by Commissioner DeLoge, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, objection, move on now to item number 13, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item, Commissioners, is for the purposes of the board establishing your FY19 maximum discretionary levels as part of the budget process, part of the upcoming budget process, and pursuant to our ordinance. This is like the item you get each year, with one exception, is that this year, I've brought you two items to consider, not waiting until your budget workshops you two items to consider, not waiting until your budget workshops to address. You'll see those listed there with the additional approaches of additional debris removal equipment to prepare for the upcoming hurricane season, as well as some enhanced cybersecurity monitoring. Again, these issues are presented here for your consideration, and I should note that it's recommended that your discretionary levels are consistent with the current year's amounts. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Deloge.
Do you have any public speakers, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir.
I'd like to make, first of all, I would like to thank staff once again. This is the beginning of the budget process. I know that y'all put a lot of time and energy into what you bring forth before us. I'd like to make a motion for options one, two, three, and four, the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Staff recommendation moved by Commissioner Deloge. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor.
Is legal services taking a cut? Is legal services in the short taking a hit in this?
No, no, Commissioner, that will actually be brought back to you as part of your April budget workshop. It's not part of this item.
Now...
So the answer is no, it's not affected by this item.
Okay, there are some rumblings that they're supposed to be taking a hit. Is that going to pan out, or what?
I'm not aware of hearing any of that at this point in time, Commissioners. We'll be bringing that back to you as part of the budget process.
Is it the state government, you know, cutting on them? Okay, all right, I'm curious about that. Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to trot this thought across the dais and I hope that it doesn't get stabbed to death or die a lonely death. I've said some years ago that I believe that our budget should at least have 1% of committed to the do-gooding aspect of what we do through CHSP. And when I talked with United Way representatives two, three weeks ago, I asked them to please share and actually asked them to come by, because I think that in a good humane society and some of the points that Commissioner Deloge just pointed out to us, I don't understand why we don't have at least 1% of our budget committed to human services. And if I remember right, that would probably come Allen somewhere close to about maybe $2.5 million is where we should be. And while I'm not sure the pulse of, and I'm not taking anyone's pulse on this, but I am suggesting that, Mr. Chairman, when we come back for our budget in April, that we would, this board is willing to look at what 1% budget support of human services to the least, to those who the Alice report have said are struggling. And it just seems to me that, given the high numbers of suffering in this community, a little bit unique and different from Mr. Latimer's report, unique and different from that great reporter, Mr. Jones and Mr. Pinkery and others, that the Alice report is totally opposite. And there's great need, Commissioners, for our taking a stronger stand. And I'd love for us, and I know I've done this year after year after year, and I'm willing to continue to do that, but I think that I would love if our commission would walk with me to see what a 1% commitment to CHSP would look like. So is that needed in a motion, Mr. Chairman, or what? How would you like to process?
As a motion on the floor, you can ask the maker of the motion to amend.
Maker, can we amend that? Who's maker?
Maker of the motion is Commissioner Delley.
I'm sorry, could you restate your question?
He likes to amend his motion to include 1% of the county's overall budget, which is about $240 million or so, to CHSP specifically.
1%.
Not just indiscretionary fund, but CHSP specifically.
Expand that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the motion on the table as it is. Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Recognizing that a substitute motion may, could be dead on arrival, nothing beats a failure but a better try, so I'll try again next year. Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, will you speak to just what percentage, how much we spend on discretionary funding?
1%.
Period?
Just human services funding, we're well in excess of 1%, but not, again, as Commissioner Proctor framed it, we are short of that, obviously, in our CHSP process, yes.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on point, we're at 1.2 million, we are less than a half of a percent. We ain't half a percent of the total budget to serve hu- human services needs for the county. And we're tasked as a government, from my understanding, and county attorney, unless something has changed.
Actually, 1.2 is exactly half. If we're at 2.5, I mean, 0.5 is exactly half. If we're at 240, 1% would be 2.4 million.
I thought it was at 2.5 million. I mean, 2.250 million dollars.
No, we're about 240.
I'm operating $10 million ahead of?
County Administrator told me about 240.
Okay, good, good. So we're exactly one half of a percent.
We're exactly half, yes, sir.
You've been to church and heard it said that 99 and a half won't do. We down in the red zone, y'all, and we need to step up with that other half, because we on the half yard line, and we can get it into the end zone. And I'm asking us to stay open-minded, to, you know, tithing concept. Y'all know what tithing is?
Yes, sir.
You know, to give a percentage giving. But a half a percent ain't no percent. It ain't even a whole percent. So percentage, you got to come up to one to be tithing. And I think that as we think of the Judeo-Christian essence of our community, that is consistent with the values, is consistent with the convictions, is consistent with all of us and all of you who are outstanding members contributing to our faith-based communities. This is not inconsistent. So I'm asking that you Commissioners would note that we can give 1% in Leon County, and I don't know what Commissioner Deloge has seen out there in the nation, but we don't want to be backwards, and, you know, we're a first-world country. I think 1% is a goal that we should strive for in our future. Another incrementally, bring this up another one-fourth. Commissioner Delley, you think your motion could tolerate a fourth?
Not exactly. The reason why is I think that if we're going to have that much of a significant increase, we should have, I'm not opposed to having the conversation, but I think we should have it in context of the entire budget when we go through our work, full-day workshop.
That's what I'm asking, that we can put a four for, another four for percent, which would be, Nick, how much that is?
2.2.
I mean, to add another four on that.
2.4.
2.4, something like that. That we could have that discussion. That's what we're here to do, to discuss.
How about we dispense, I'm sorry.
How about we dispense of the motion, and then if you want to ask for a budget discussion item, when we discuss our full budget, I mean, I guess we could talk about it then, but I don't think it's going anywhere today, Commissioner Proctor. Motion on the floor is for...
The motion stands as it is. I mean, if you want to make a substitute motion, I encourage you to do so, but the motion, or amend the motion, but the motion stands as it is.
Motion on the floor is for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Delley, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Is that opposition, Commissioner Deloge?
No, I'm with you on this one. Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Commissioner Proctor?
Yeah.
Floor is yours.
I don't want to strain the charitable sense or to belittle the charitable spirit of what we've done, but I don't want us to walk away from the days to night feeling overly exuberant in the face when we've left and been unresponsive to so much more need. And I think that we can do better, tighten our belts, and do more. And I'm merely seeking, Chairman, that we would have a look when we come back to our budget process, that we would look at what we could do by increasing 1.2 to...
2.4.
Wherever I'm trying to go, and to do that, I like to look at those numbers, even if we did it through rotations of a one-fourth and schedule another one-fourth eight years from now when I'm gone. So I thought that I should say that. Commissioners, y'all feeling that? I mean, I'm asking for your charitable spirit to what we're trying to do. Stand tall.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
So move.
Is there a second? Motion does, we're back for a second. We'll move on now to item number 14, Commissioners. Let's just get through 14, then we'll take a break. It's like we're going to run a little long tonight. Call your families and let them know. Item number 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item seeks board consideration of a proposed restructuring of the county's participation in the community redevelopment area, agency, rather, including significant reductions in the county's total financial contribution to the CRA, the elimination and the elimination of county commission membership on the board. For ease of understanding, Commissioners, of all the moving parts, page two, specifically on the top of page two, provides you with a breakdown of the $23 million in savings to the county associated with this proposal, and options one, A through E on the same page provide a breakdown of the major tenants of the proposed agreement. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I know you've all been thoroughly briefed on the issue, and again, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, floor is yours.
Chairman, we've stood around this issue for long enough, and there's no need to hold our nose, there's no need to cry. I move staff's recommendation tonight, options one, A through E.
Staff recommendation has been moved by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Lindley and Vice Chair. Anybody else who wants to second, raise your hand, thank you. I have Commissioner Dozier in queue to speak. Commissioner Dozier, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think I can see where the vote's going to go with multiple seconds, and I got to say, I'm pretty disappointed. I'm just going to, I don't know how else to frame that right now. I understand our budget issues, and I've struggled with this. When I had briefing essay with the county administrator, I wasn't quite sure where I was going to land on this. The CRA is not fun, it's not easy, but we brought up getting out of the downtown CRA a year ago, a little over a year ago, because it may not have been necessary. We ask for more information continuously, and I think an effort to fill a budget issue or to assess the effectiveness of the downtown evolving to a point where we are extending our time in the downtown district by three more years than what we anticipated. We're extending the life of the Frenchtown district by eight years and leaving the county with no voice on that board for the next 20 years is not necessarily what I've heard from our constituents, who are paying into this and are also city residents. So I share the struggles with those who've served on the board, and I think the county voice has been very effective, even if it's slow and painful. I'd rather us try to move in a direction of making it more like Blueprint, making it more independent, more county-controlled and less, but I, and I can't support the item. So just wanted to share a couple thoughts with you all. I would love to hear more discussion. I know it's 5:00, but if it's the will of the board to move in this direction, I sincerely hope that whatever happens with the city this year, and we could see three, four, five new people on the city commission, and things are already slow for Frenchtown Southside, things are already slow on the CRA, this could slow things down a good bit if we have a lot of new voices. It takes a while to get up to speed with any new jobs, so I am concerned about this and just needed to share those concerns with you. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for that moment, and I would love to hear others, but I do hope the CRA keeps moving forward should we take this action. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more Commissioners in queue to speak. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one. Commissioners, we're going to go ahead and push through 15, 16, and 17. Yes.
On this subject, may I ask one more question?
If so.
Thank you. This is not directly in line with the subject or the information that's brought in the agenda items, so I wanted to let that vote go forward and bring up one other issue. So in December of '14, we changed the interlocal agreement and gave the CRA control of close to $5 million in tourist development tax dollars. It has been three years of painful struggle, and we still don't have a process in place, I think something was supposed to start in the last couple months, to expend about half of those dollars.
Right.
We have committed a good amount to the North American project, or the Cascades Park project for green rooms for other things, but I would like to make a motion that, based in this negotiation that's about to move forward, because the interlocal agreement will be opened up, based on the vote that just happened, to bring those performing arts center dollars, the tourist development dollars, back into the TDC and let us administer them under the same type process that we have already asked for with the CRA. They have a tremendous amount on their plate. They have, staff has said, this is not in line, Assistant City Manager has said this is not in line with what they fully know, and they're already engaging COCA and TDC to help them. I think we can be more efficient and after three years, finally get something done. And lastly, the money would not be bound by the CRA district. So that is my motion, Mr. Chair, and if nothing else, to bring back an agenda item, fleshing this out, if there's any issues, county administrator or county attorney has any issues with this, but I would very much like to add it into this negotiation because it requires interlocal advantage.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Mr. Administrator, you want to talk just about process? If we were ever going to see it, if it stayed with the CRA, was it going to come back to us? If we approve this motion, go through the process, and it comes back to us, what's the process then? Talk to me.
Well, first, this issue will be on the next city commission, this proposed interlocal will be on the next city commission's agenda for their consideration. This obviously would be a new element, which of course, at the direction of the board, we would bring into that conversation. The only thing I would add to it is obviously that, under the current interlocal agreement, that all of the expenditures associated with those dollars still have to come to this board for approval. But I understand that the motion, or the sentiment expressed by Commissioner Dozier goes further than that and suggests that we would remove those dollars and the balance of them after the North American property in their entirety back to county control. Obviously, again, it's a new element, but at your, at your direction, we would make that a part of these negotiations.
I'll speak briefly on it. I mean, I'm pleased with the fact that it will come back to us and that it cannot move any further without our approval. I don't see a reason why we should take it back in the TDC coffers. I think they'll get through that process. So I don't know if I can, as it sits right now, vote in favor of the motion on the floor. Commissioner Dozier, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, to that point, I neglected to mention that, yes, we get to approve whatever happens at the CRA, but the inertia in this process, it's been three years and we don't have, I mean, those of you who've sat on the CRA know how many different agenda items, how many different incredibly painful conversations we went through, just trying to figure out what we all wanted to do with the money. And right now, I'm hearing from people that they've been working on proposals for months, anticipating workshops in January, that I don't believe has happened yet because of all the other things that have happened with CRA. This issue keeps getting moved down the line. We've got critical needs right now, people have put money and time into it. I'm just saying, expend the money exactly as we've discussed, but let TDC and county staff administer it, and I bet our staff can get it done in the next couple months, what's taken three years on the other side. So I don't think that just checking the box... So, I don't think that just checking the box after the process, I mean, it could be a year, it could be two years from now. Who knows? I think we need to address this now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
More Commissioners in queue to speak. I have motion on the floor by Commissioners. Yeah, the motion on the floor is that we would bring back the arts dollars from CRA control back to TDC control, and we would deal with that process and administer those dollars ourselves here at the county. That would be, that is the motion on the floor is made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Daily. I did get the motion correct? Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Seeing all the speakers, all those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye.
One, two, three, four.
Four to three. All right, motion passes four to three. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Administrator, you start the process of making that happen?
Yes.
Yes. That wasn't an agenda item. That was supposed to go ahead and do it. Yes. Procedure reissue, Mr. Attorney?
What? Commissioner Deloge's vote by our own rules, when he participates off-premise, cannot be the tiebreaker on a vote. So, the vote fails three-three.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
What?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Deloge's been in a lot of meetings offsite. What you talking about? Why doesn't his vote count? We know his voice.
I'm sorry.
We know who he is. Why doesn't his vote count?
Mr. Lindley, did you vote in favor of the motion?
She voted in favor? So, it was actually, it was actually five-two.
All right.
So, it was five-two, so it makes it four-three. Motion carries.
Fans.
Yeah, motion carries.
Why can't a telephonic vote count?
Can we, can we discuss that later?
Huh?
Can we discuss that later? Yeah. It can count, it can't be a tiebreaker. Item number 15, Mr. Administrator.
It don't count, yeah. When it's needed, it don't.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks board approval to award Capital Asphalt Incorporated the continuing services contract.
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommendation has been moved by Commissioner Daily, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Deloge. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries objection. Item 16 is for a consideration of voluntary annexation. Is there a motion to approve annexation?
Move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation has been moved by Commissioner Bailey. Is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Chair. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries without objection. Listen, Administrator, if you don't mind, full board appointment to the Canopy Roads Citizens Committee as well as the Community Development Block Grant Citizens Advisory Task Force. Commissioners, you have options within your, within your agendas. Is there any motions?
Motion on Canopy Roads is Holly Myers.
Second.
If that's a second, is there, do you have another appointment?
We have just one to Canopy Roads.
Just one. I'm talking about for the, for the community block grant.
I don't have a...
Okay. So, motion on the floor has been made by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Deloge. For who now? Holly Myers.